All right, good morning, everyone. Today is the Town Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, March 2, 2022, at 8:00 a.m. in the Town Hall Ruos Room. We will all stand for the pledge, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on our agenda is visitors. Do we have any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time?
I'm Sandy Allen. I'm chairperson of the Design Review Board. I'm here in support of Adrian Loth, who has applied. We should have her application as an alternate for the Design Review Board. We need an alternate. We have a couple of full members that have health issues now, so this position is important to us for a while.
Okay. Thanks, Sandy. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on now to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes from the February 16, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Should move.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Appointments, reappointments. Today, we do have three that are on the agenda, the first one being Zachary Plord, Democrat for the Sustainability Committee, for a term until 6/30/2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
Should move.
Second?
Aye.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next up is Mark Barrellaro, Republican for the Human Services Advisory Board, for a term until 6/30/2024. Do we have a motion to approve?
Should move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And lastly, Adrian Loth, affiliated for the Design Review Board, alternate seat, term until 6/30/2024. Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right, the next two are for two different organizations, but for the same exception, which is for alcoholic beverages on town property. So, first is for the International Food and Beer Festival Exception Request. They're planning, I think their date tentatively is July 8, I think?
July 8.
July 8. So, that will be in the works, and obviously, they're taking this step now so that they can make sure that they can do what they need to do as they go forward in plan. So, we will look for a motion to approve that exception, request to Charter or to Chapter 194, Article 11, 194-5A. A second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And the next one is for the Clinton Summer Fest and Fireworks Exception. Same exception, again, for alcoholic beverages on a town property. Do we have a motion to approve?
Should move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
May I just ask the proposed dates for those?
Paul?
The Summer Fest is August 27, rain date, August 28 in the International Food and Beer Festival, July 8, rain date, July 15.
Nice.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, moving on now to item number seven, which is the building permit fees. We have to let it hear from our building official. Paul, can you give us a brief overview on what this involves?
Sure. I kind of telegraphed this earlier for you that we're looking to have an item before you that would pull out of the town's building permit fee the state component that we collect for the state. Every town collects 26 cents per thousand of construction value, goes off to the state. We cannot waive it. When the town has waived building permit fees in the past for the town, Board of Education, and nonprofits, we have to back out that 26 cents in order to make sure that the state always gets its piece. So, the request here is to amend the building fee to have that 26 cents sit separate and distinct outside of the normal building permit. That's more of a common practice amongst other municipalities. It also works well with the online permitting that we're trying to launch so that we can have, you know, if a nonprofit comes in, we just click off the box and it will compute the piece that we have to send up to Hartford and collect from the individual, and it makes it easier to segregate the building permit fee so we know how much stays local and how much has to go up to Hartford. There is no ordinance that lays out a specific dollar amount, so putting it in front of the council is a motion to change the building permit fee from the current rate of $25 on the first thousand of value and $12 for subsequent thousand dollars of value to $25 and 26 cents and $12 and 26 cents respectively.
Got that motion? Who wants to repeat that?
Should move.
Well played, Dennis.
Second. We owe it to Mary to bail us out. She just writes it up.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you for the motion, Dennis. It was awesome. All right, we will now move on to a line item transfer request. This is coming from the Town Clerk's Office for $800 to increase general code for 800 and pay 800 out of elections. Do we have a motion to approve?
Should move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number nine, Council Discussions on Future Projects and Correspondence.
There was a correspondence, wasn't there? Should we discuss it? I'm sorry, I'm not. I knew it was important at the time, but I've forgotten what it is.
You added that in response to comments that you raised at a prior meeting, making sure that letters were acknowledged, so correspondence is there to make sure.
Right, exactly. But I'm sorry, I've forgotten what that correspondence was. A woman wrote to us in the last couple of weeks. I'm sorry that I don't have that information.
Only one I'm aware of that isn't a sales pitch is somebody asking for what the process would be under ARPA for nonprofits, and I responded to that individual earlier this week regarding that there will be a process, but we're not going to make anything online until after we get beyond the town meeting, which is tonight.
Okay.
What we have now is a project blog.
You have it?
Yeah, they got it.
Yeah.
Since there's not much to report, my intention was to put it on as once a month, but the request is that it appear at every meeting. So, there's nothing on ARPA pending tonight's town meeting, so there's no update till you get past this evening. There's no update to share with you right now on Pearson. Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, it's the same report that you had last meeting, which was whether the council wanted to determine to have a workshop to review this. It's been there, hasn't really elicited much in the way of council interest, so whether it stays or goes, there needs to be some engagement around that issue for whether you want to have a workshop to work through that document. Fire Department Facility Plan, it's the same report that you had before. The council needs to determine the need for a workshop to review it. Older members of the council are aware and received a presentation of that effect. Newer members of the council have not had a presentation of that effect. Radio Replacement Project, there is no update to give you.
Carl, what is, after tonight's ARPA vote, what is left in the ARPA funds? I'm just curious. I know we're expecting another 1.9, and I guess I'm including that, too.
We're supposed to receive another 1.9. The timing of that 1.9 is undetermined. So, it was supposed to come at about the same time the first 1.9 came, which would be July-ish. There have been suggestions coming out of Washington that those dollars might flow sooner than July, so I don't know when we're actually going to receive it. Just to follow with what was the original advice, that would be July would be when the second tranche comes in. As I already relayed to the council, when I sent out the motions for the town meeting, the council has the authority to make appropriations under $50,000, according to the charter, so I pulled out appropriations that were at that $50,000 level out of the town meeting agenda to make it a future town council agenda item for the council to make those final approvals. So, off the top of my head, there's over a million left to be appropriated. I don't have it down to the penny at this point.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, Carl, there's still another round of actions for the council to take after we get out of the town meeting process. Applications on the administrative side, I'm finalizing those. Mary and I have already discussed making them available on the Internet, so we would have a page on the town's website that would be ARPA-specific to put that information out there for folks that we would need some documentation on their applications in order to authorize cutting checks.
Excellent. Thanks for doing that.
Just, Carl, just to be clear on the Pearson School, so no update. The last, the last thing that I remember is you talked to Jerry Vies, and there's an offer out to the trust, and we're just waiting for a response. Yeah, well, that was an executive session, so it was kind of inappropriate to bring it up right here in public session, but I have nothing to report to the council on where we stand here. So, no report.
And Carl, the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, am I wrong? I was talking to Kathy Zemecknich from Conservation. Do they have some sort of plan? Had they?
It is not a Conservation Commission thing.
Okay.
This is a FEMA requirement.
Okay.
It was done at the regional level. It involved emergency management folks and public safety. Conservation had no real role in it. Christine was the town's liaison to that report at the COG level because it was, it had a regional front end for things that would be hazard mitigation, it would be done at a regional level, and then each town had its own individual annex, so the discussion point was more the town's annex of it for where we wanted to go, what implementation steps did we want to prioritize, what were we going to move on, what we were not going to move on. So, there, there was an expression of interest from the council, but I haven't heard anybody expressing anything else beyond that one time. Moving forward on it, there's things that are in the works right now, but those haven't been council things, as I've reported in the past. We're currently engaging with Yukon's Climate Corps to help with some coastal resiliency planning that they'll do in their spring semester. The discussion of a bridge with, over Beach Park Road, that was going to be a partnership between the town, DEEP, and Ducks Unlimited, was aimed at another implementation item within the natural hazards mitigation study. So, things are ongoing. I just haven't heard any direction as to whether this is a council thing anymore or not. So, there hasn't been any engagement whatsoever, and it's not, it did not come out of a town board or commission, so it came.
So, it would be the council's role to create this plan?
No, the plan has been created.
Okay.
It was created at the COG level.
Okay.
The council previously adopted it. It's been approved by FEMA, so that meets the minimum threshold of making sure that we're eligible for future FEMA reimbursement. The idea is to look at it, to decide what things the council wants to implement. There seemed to be an interest in that with the old council. I haven't heard any engagement from this group as to whether you want to focus on it in any way, shape, or form. The document exists on the COG's website. I don't expect that you would read the whole thing because you've got towns in there that are Clinton, so the conversation would be built around the Clinton annex and what are the flag implementation steps for what the town wants to focus on, work on, what have you. Before the election, the then council was interested in some kind of resiliency studying to take place. We were trying to get, been trying to get Yukon's engagement for a while now, and we just have to wait for the timing of the students, which is a spring semester project, but our ask went in in the fall semester. So, things are moving. It's just, it's on this list because we threw a bunch of stuff at this list, and I haven't heard whether you guys want this or not.
I'm just so unfamiliar with all of this, and I mean, I'm certainly, it sort of sounds like Eric Bergman may have been behind that, and I'll talk to him and try to understand. But this.
Eric and Carol were the most.
Eric and Carol, okay, okay. I'd hate to, I hate to ignore it every single time, but I don't understand how we're going to go about this. Is it in a council meeting, subcommittee?
I mean, at this point, if you want to set up workshops, I mean, for that one and for the Fire Department Facility Plan, that would be, might be a good idea to get everybody else up to date on where.
That'd be great to get up to date.
Members had the facility plan presentation from the Fire Department, so, I mean, that would be.
Okay, that's.
If people are interested in that, then we can move forward with that.
Hate to ignore it every time, so I'd like that.
You will have to read the plan.
Yes.
And then the council conversation will have to revolve around what you want to do, how you want to move forward that implementation. So, it will involve the work of reading the plan and understanding.
Right. Maybe Carol can lead the way since she wants to.
I think everybody's going to have to dig into it, so everybody has an opinion on it. All right, so we'll work towards getting a workshop for those two. All right. Anything else? No? All right. We will then move on to item 10, which is the chairman's report. Other than just a reminder that this evening, we have two more meetings this evening, so we have the special town meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the green room. That is for the ARPA allocation, and then we have our special meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the Rose Room to finalize the budget and send a public hearing. So, again, we will have the discussions in regards to the budget tonight at 7:00. Number 11, Town Manager's Report.
You have my written report, so highlights from the written report. I gave you the motions previously for what will be on the annual town meeting, special town meeting tonight. It's my understanding that there's, that's some of the most questions that have been before the town meeting for a while. It's not a matter of pick 10, it's hopefully action on all of them so that everyone, everyone can, we can get the approval to roll out the dollars either spent by the town or applications coming in from individual entities. At the COG meeting, some of the conversation was, was around the ultimate flow of federal infrastructure funding. None of those dollars have been released yet because the federal government doesn't have a budget, so they're operating under continuing resolution rather than actually having a formal appropriation. So, there's technically no money until they actually have the budget, but everyone is prepping for what, what we're supposed to do. So, the communication that's coming out of Washington and out of the governor's office is focused on regionalism, cooperation, but then, at least at the state level, with the way the governor is appointed, Mark Bowden to be the lead on it, as the state wants to be aggressive in trying to find some of those dollars. The expectation that's been communicated in a couple of regional meetings has been that the COGS will play some kind of a role in either aggregating or vetting projects. So, some of those early discussions are ongoing right now. The projects in our region aren't necessarily town to town, but they may be similar types of work spread out geographically. So, the director of the COG is trying to get a little bit more direction from the governor's staff in terms of how things from the River COG region should, could be packaged for consideration and funding. On the purchasing side, I'd like for you a couple of RFPs that are in process. The Harbor Management Study is out for the second time. The Beneficial Reuse of Landfill, as I briefed you on previously, is also out. The Town Engineer is something that we have to issue and put back out on the street. We put that out a while ago, pre-COVID, did not make an award based on where we were at that point in time, but we can revisit that, that procurement to go back out and find consulting Town Engineer. Hiring, there's a number of hot positions that are still in process, so in my capacity as HR Director for the town, I have to be involved in all of those hirings. So, the land use clerk, the senior program coordinator, part-time clerk for the WPCC. So, there's a number of vacancies that need to be reviewed and pushed through. Those would ultimately come back to the council for ratification of the manager's selection per the charter, so that can help backfill the vacancies. We'll see what the interview process yields. The Yukon Climate Corps Group, we did have a Zoom meeting with them. They've given us a scope of work. It looks like they'll be a little bit more ambitious than the data collection that we anticipated, so they'll be focused on trying to come up with something that's sort of an initial coastal resiliency plan. Their area of focus is Route 1 and south, unless we had specific areas of concern north of Route 1. So, some of the dams have been flagged as areas of potential concern. We have definitely two students, there's possibility of two more participating, and their, their target is to have a document done before the end of the semester, which is early May, so we would have something end of April, beginning of May, at least as an initial draft, coming out of that work product.
Would that kind of thing help in the hazards mitigation plan?
That's why I pursued it, because there was interest in doing that. It was one of the action steps under hazard mitigation, so this was a way to get it done without putting a bunch of dollars in to hire a consultant to do the plan or make it part of the plan of Conservation and Development, so it's a way to get some initial work done at, at no cost to us.
So, maybe a workshop after that? Would that be a good idea? The hazards mitigation workshop after we get that information, would that be useful for us?
It's an implementation step of part of a bigger plan, so it's not the driver of the hazards mitigation plan. Hazards mitigation is looking at everything.
Got it.
It's not just rising sea level on coastal properties. That's one subset of the whole natural, natural hazards mitigation plan.
Thanks, Carl. Any questions? Okay. Move on to item number 12, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Does anybody have anything to report today?
No.
Nice. So excited about all the meetings, I know. All right, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Would you explain what that budget meeting tonight? I think I get the ARPA one. We have all the motions, and we're going to go through the motions, but how will the budget meeting, the agenda's two lines, and it's not terribly clear to me what will happen. Could you?
Yeah, basically, it's opened up to council members to discuss the budget, the overall budget itself, and if there's any cuts that they'd be interested in making. So, we would discuss all that information at that meeting tonight. There's proposed budget cuts that Carl's already presented to us at his workshop or when he presented to us, so we would have to make a motion and a movement on those already. So, those are already on the table. The other things that, obviously, that come into play would be, as we go forward, would be health benefits, because we don't have final numbers on that. Board Assessment of Appeals is still an outstanding figure, because there'll be some adjustment possibly there. Final grant list is not finalized either. So, you know, there's a lot that plays out there, and our meeting tonight isn't the end-all. So, the meeting tonight is to discuss it amongst council members, and then at that point, push it to a public hearing, set the public hearing date, and then at that point, the input from the town, we can make adjustments again at that point. So, this isn't, you know, the meeting tonight isn't to sit here and say, you know, it's just, you know, an open discussion, but it's not the end of the budget process. So, we still have time in that process to make adjustments to that going forward, should we see fit. So, tonight is initial discussions, you know, taking care of the proposed budgets that the town manager presented already, you know, having a discussion, and then moving into the public hearing.
When are the appeals meetings going to be held? During the month of March, as I recall that?
Yes.
So, they're early March. They're early March, so they, they will take place after this meeting.
Right.
So, what we've done in the past is Board of Assessment Appeals has had its meeting, and then we recognize where the grant list goes after their work is done.
Right.
At that April meeting.
Oh, okay.
We're making the final adjustments.
Yeah, we were just curious about the timing of that. Okay.
So, if you remember, when I presented the budget, I made a discount on the grant list anticipating BAA action.
Yep.
So, if their action is not as much as I anticipated, then we would add back to the grant list, which is what we did last year, and then that obviously pulls down the bill rate.
Those proposed cuts, those are the things that we need to present, right? Carl has proposed the budget, and any cuts would be things that we bring forward, not Carl, correct?
Correct. The council would make.
You need to actually say you want to cut the things I've presented.
Right.
Is that your amendment to the budget?
No, it's not my amendment.
Okay.
I'm telling you, you can cut those dollar amounts, and there was some discussion around it, and one of them, I needed some concurrence from the council on in terms of how you wanted to deal with the financing of it. So, if you're fine with those, you need to take action to make those revisions.
Who will present those revisions?
I already presented them during the workshop, but I can present them again tonight for your reminder.
Is that, is that allowed under the charter for you to present further amendments?
There is nothing in the charter that prevents me from telling you where you can make amendments to the budget, and I have done that throughout the entire budget process for all of the budgets I have put together in this town. When something has come up as a refinement that provides an opportunity for the council to reduce the tax levy, I bring that forward immediately for you to make those adjustments. So, if you recall, during the budget workshop, I did flag, we are normally at this point waiting for firm numbers on healthcare, we are waiting for firm numbers on pension. In the past, those numbers have come in lower than what the original forecast was, and I have offered those to the council, advising the council, you could cut the budget by whatever those dollar amounts were in order to pull down the cost of the town's budget. So, it's not that I don't have the authority to do that. There is nothing in the charter that precludes me from telling you there are other opportunities to reduce the budget.
Is the ECS front finalized?
No. We have the governor's budget, so all state grants and aid are undetermined at this point until there, so it depends on how quickly the General Assembly can pass the budget.
I suppose the Assembly has to pass that, right?
Right. Typically, they have not acted until after.
Yep.
Budget referendum, so by practice, you look at the governor's budget. The governor's budget historically has been a floor rather than ceiling.
That's what I thought.
With a couple of rare circumstances, but, so we're looking at at least what he has proposed as a baseline. If the General Assembly adds to it, great, but that isn't going to be known until after or through our budget process here.
I remember in the past, it was usually reapportionment. Some of it went. I remember in the past, it was usually reapportionment. Some of it went more to the cities and less to the towns and vice versa at other times. It was always the same total dollar amount, but it was kind of moved around.
So the, there is a formula for ECS. The formula was amended. The net effect of that formula on Clinton was a reduction in the amount of ECS.
Right.
So we were on a glide path for the, sort of this continual reduction until we got to whatever our new baseline was going to be. Then COVID happened. The governor proposed in the biennial budget leveling it off sooner. So the formula reductions were not implemented. They're still, they are still law, but the budget provided for backfill. So his budget amendments for the current cycle retain the ECS funding where it was proposed last year. The General Assembly could always say, we don't like the ECS formula anymore, or we're going to hold all towns harmless and hold them harmless as of a certain date in time. But they could do whatever they wanted. It's just a matter of whether there's money in the state budget to do that. We're utilizing the governor's numbers, which normally is the conservative position to take.
Carl, neither Chris nor I remember the specific budget cuts. Could we have?
We can do those tonight.
If you'd like to do it right now, we could do it right now. In capital, it was $100,000 in the Fire Department. I said that there was $100,000 in there for HOES. I said it was a data entry error.
No.
It was not meant for this fiscal year. It's meant for next fiscal year. So that's an immediate reduction you can take that has no impact whatsoever. Second amendment was in the Planning and Zoning Department. The planner is included on the salary line, and I left some money in on the consultant line anticipating that there would be an overlap because I couldn't hire somebody effective 7-1. As long as the council is fine with moving monies down from the salary line into the consultant line as a transfer as we go through the fiscal year, you can take out the money that I had in the consultant line, which was $20,000.
That's it?
Those are also in the minutes, so.
They're in the minutes.
These are spelled out in the minutes of that meeting.
I think those were the second night of the budget review, that I flagged both of those.
Thank you.
When we did revenues, I also flagged revenue adjustments. So pilot payment was going to be less, but there was some additional revenue that could be recognized for harbor management. So between the two, there's a net increase of $7,200 and some change, almost $7,300 on the revenue side. So you would make a revenue adjustment. You would make the capital adjustment, if that's your desire, and you could make the planning and zoning adjustment, if that's your desire.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, look for motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Opposed? Thank you. See everyone tonight at 6:00.